You know Jose Andrew Tarr.
Yeah, oh yeah, he's currently mayor.
Oh, we don't know.
I think so, but you know, we've been around Jake Howing, really good Jacob. Yeah, really melded.
Hi, how are you?
I think he's doing real good.
Hey, I appreciate it. Hey there, Robin, good to see you. How's things?
Hey, how you doing?
Good, thank you.
Nice to see you, just say hello.
She's gonna take that one too.
Both of these?
Yeah, these so.
No, I saw you make up for that last one. We have to get away Scott. Yeah, look at the curls. Changing the guard to a degree, huh? So next year, it's three, right? No, it's an off year.
You think it's maybe outside?
Off year and then three. Is that you following year? No?
Yeah, let's, I'm going to wait for a minute, see.
Yeah, that you, oh, you're termed out, right?
He'll be termed out.
And then it's you, the mayor, and...
We're on the same day.
Ray?
It's us three, our mayor, me, and two, they're all the same.
But it's you and Ray on this one.
Yeah, me and you. Where you go?
That's always a real big ol' act, you know?
That's right, he is going in tonight.
That's always a big ol' act in three people.
Same, forty years like it.
Who is? No, I don't have their number. I'm about sixteen years removed from that. You want me to sit in the hallway?
Lightning got a big game tonight. Do or die, you gotta win.
Yeah, right. Are they just gonna see the street?
Yeah, they're supposed to be.
Mayor, Chief's gonna go out there and see if they're out there in the hallway.
We'll wait for him.
Well, we could ask Crystal.
If not, we can...
They wanna put that on you.
You still can do it?
What?
You still can?
Sir, that was a long time ago.
How are you? That's all right, I'll just...
Okay, you're good.
That's why I'm sure we'll meet there someday.
Like, get with it.
I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, April 4th, 2017 at 6:32 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Alahouzes?
Here.
Vice Mayor Terrapenny?
Here.
Commissioner Banther?
Here.
Commissioner Seber?
Here.
Commissioner Kikta?
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Jack Long from the Regional Medical Center at the Bayonet Pointing. If you please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, and then we will have the nation anthem.
Heavenly Father, we've gathered here to do your business this evening, for all we do touches the lives of your children, people you love. Help Mayor Alahouzes, each commissioner, each official to perform their duties with compassion and strength. Thank you for their sacrifice and dedication to the people of Tarpon Springs. Bless their families, bless their lives. May we all enjoy safety in this dangerous world. May each of us help others in need. And may we take seriously our responsibility as citizens to serve, protect, lead, and advance this community. We pray in your holy name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please remain standing, we have the national anthem. It will be performed by Laren Graham.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright bright and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watch were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air blew through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say the red stars fangled, but they yet wait o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Mrs. Graham, thank you for the beautiful nation anthem. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Thank you for being here tonight. The, um, I now like to recognize the past seat officials that we have here with us today. Vice Mayor, uh, former Mayor Protos, former Mayor David Archie, Commissioner Dalakis, Commissioner Terrapenny, and Commissioner Robin Singer. Thank you for being here tonight. The first item on the agenda tonight is the presentations to Vice Mayor Terrapenny. We'd like to present Vice Mayor Terrapenny with some of the gifts as a token of appreciation for his services and for his contributions to the City of Tarpon Springs. If you please step forward. I'd like to present you with the, uh, plaque that says, "Towns and Terrapenny, in recognition and appreciation of dedication and devoted service as the City Commission 2011, 2012, 2013, 2014, 2015, and as the Vice Mayor 2016 and 2017, City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, Mayor Chris Alahouzes, Vice Mayor Townsend Terrapenny, Commissioner David Banther, Commissioner Ray Seber, and Commissioner Kikta." Congratulations. We also like to present you with the diver's helmet. This is the traditional symbol that we have in Tarpon. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Banther also has a presentation that he likes to, uh...
All right.
As without going, Vice Mayor Jeff Larson last year, I decided it's always nice to have something a little bit light on a night like this. So, um, well, Townsend, if I may, we all know how you love the title Vice Mayor, and you worked well, I think. I think you served at that office well, and, uh, um, we know that you like to, um, drive around town a lot, right? And you have that, that Public Works hat in front of your car, right? Right there, so we got you, I know, um, your, your, your very own hat to replace that, and it's a camouflage hat, it says Vice Mayor Ray on it.
Very nice.
That's your hat for that, and then, you know, again, we know those Tarpon 500s that you'd like to go on late at night, so we got you a license plate to match the hat, so we can see you coming, all right?
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll have that passed on down, so there you go.
Very much.
Commissioner Seber also has a presentation for you.
Yes, I do. Uh, I've been sitting up here next to you for about three years now. Three years exactly, almost, but, um, you know, you're a little bit hard to get to know. And it was the guidance counselor, I was trained to facilitate conversation, and I was listening skills, and maybe a year after I knew you, we started having some conversations. So I, I now feel like I know you a little bit better, and I know you wear several hats. And I appreciate that you, um, are preserving the heritage, our oldest heritage here in, uh, in the state with cattle. Um, and so I bought you, I got you some...
Thank you very much.
And, um, because you like cows, this is a little bottle stopper.
Oh, very nice.
That's a cow. So think of, uh, of your cattle industry when you use it.
I will. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I appreciate you.
Vice Mayor Terrapenny, I want to thank you for your service. It really has been a pleasure serving with you. Um, you've always been very, very thoughtful, and you always tried to make the right decisions for Tarpon Springs. And, um, to me, it's a special reward knowing that you were, did an excellent job as a commissioner, as a vice mayor, because, uh, I believe that, uh, I had to influence you a little bit in order to run for an office, so it's a special night, and thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes, thank you, um, Vice Mayor. I mean, it seems like just yesterday, and that was six years ago now, that it was your election party. Remember, I, I was telling somebody I had to get out of jury duty to go to that. And, uh, so I, I just can't believe six years ha- has flown by. Um, your, um, contributions to this board, while your years of service can definitely be measured in six years, I think what you brought to the table and what you gave to Tarpon will be realized years from now. I mean, I could go on from example to example, but, um, it's all there. Your knowledge of real estate, land use, development, uh, business, and, you know, I think the knowledge you inherited from your family, and just the knowledge of Tarpon Springs is something that will be missed on this board and won't be easily replaced. And, uh, I also, it, it was my honor, I think, to serve with you on here and, and develop a friendship as well. And I pray that, um, if God gives us many years, that we can look back upon these four years when we're older and laugh a little, hopefully, and also realize the accomplishments that we made together. So I truly hope that your service is not done for this board, and I would urge you to come back on this board in some capacity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
Commissioner Seber?
I have to agree with everything that Commissioner Banther said. Um, we may not have always agreed on, on some items, but I think we worked well together as a board. Um, you were always very respectful, respectful, civil, and professional, and I, I appreciate your professionalism up here and your civility. Um, and that will be missed as well. Uh, and of course, all your knowledge that you brought to this board. So I, I appreciate having gotten to know you a little bit better and, and, uh, you helping me learn a few things.
Sure.
Uh, so you will be missed.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Kikta?
Well, Vice Mayor, we have worked together a long time, previously when I served, and, um, you are a true asset to the board, as well as our community. You've represented our city well with your knowledge and your expertise, and I feel that we work well together, and we, um, helped move the city in a, in a whole new direction. And again, it has to do with a lot of your knowledge and your expertise. And, um, I'm, I'm honored to say that I've served with you all these years, and, um, I hope to see you back here, sitting on this board in some capacity, very soon. You will be missed.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. We are now going to the public comments. If anyone has any comments, please come forward.
Bud Doc, Ryanus Drive. I'd like to just take a moment and thank all of the commissioners for their service. I know you people get a lot more complaints than you get kudos, so I'd like to give you one this evening. And I really appreciate, as I'm sure most of the citizens do, the time and effort you put in. And in particular, I would like to thank Vice Mayor Terrapenny for the services provided to the city. I don't get to many meetings, but I do keep track of what you do and actually watch a few of the TV shows after the fact. So thank you again, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anita Protos, 901 Bayshore. Townsend, I'm so proud of you. You're well spoken, you're a businessman, and you're a great leader for Tarpon. And I'm crying because I see your son here. And I remember when I changed your diaper. But you've made your family proud. And you stand for a great legacy of Tarpon Springs, a family background. Uh, you listen to your family, you listen to your grandfather, you've listened to your uncles, and you listen to your papu on your mother's side. And you have so much to be proud of. So maybe one day, little Leon will be mayor. But I bought a, I got a bottle of vitamins this Saturday from the health food store. I'm taking two a day, 'cause I'm ready for your next run. And I hope I'm alive to see you doing it. And getting old, so start working on it. But anyway, thank you for the service you've given us. And I think the proudest thing is, is when you would speak on issues, it showed your intelligence. It showed your dedication to Tarpon. And thank you for the dedication you've given to the historic preservation of Tarpon. And I just can't believe that little Terrapenny served as a commissioner and vice mayor. He was something else when he was little. In his cowboy hat, and his boots, and his jeans. I'm so proud of you, Townsend. Thank you, and thank you for having an open mind on all the issues.
Thank you.
Kathy Monahan, 214 Banana Street, Tarpon Springs. I just wanted to say my appreciation for, I know you spearheaded the effort to, um, put the streetlights around the bayou, and it's something that people had wanted for a long time. They look beautiful, appreciate them every day. So thank you for your efforts, and that specific thing, and many others as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments? Here none. We are now going to the next item, which is item number two. Consent agenda for the minutes, um, March 21st, 2017, regular session.
Mayor, excuse me. You gonna give me an opportunity to speak?
I think I should, doesn't it?
Think you should.
Yeah.
Is now the time?
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, commissioners. Uh, thank you all for being here tonight. Um, many that know me and that I've served with know that I generally do not read from, uh, prepared remarks. I usually like to, uh, speak from my heart and go from my gut. But on this scenario, I have so much that I'd like to say, uh, that I did prepare some remarks, so I've asked that you bear with me. I have nine pages, so, uh, I won't keep you here that long, but... Um, and I also, you know, feel very strongly about everything that I have to say, so if my emotions get the best of me, I apologize in advance. Um, I'd like to thank the public for making this dream of mine possible. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity of a lifetime. I'd like to thank you for your confidence in me. Thank you for standing on street corners and holding signs for me. Thank you for your donations. Thank you for talking to your neighbor about me and encouraging them to vote for me. Thank you for believing in a 25-year-old young man whose heart was in the right place. Next to being a father to my son and a good husband to my wife, this has been the honor of my life, and I'm forever grateful. It's hard for me to believe that this day has come. I've spent many nights lying awake in bed, thinking of this moment, thinking about my proud accomplishments I've achieved as your elected official, and more importantly, how lucky I am to have served my hometown. I think it's safe to say that I would not be sitting here tonight without the strength and support from my family. Um, I recall what seems like forever ago, walking through my soon-to-be neighborhood, or my future neighborhood, uh, with my wife, looking at a, my fiancee at the time, looking at a old dilapidated house that, you know, was torn apart and thinking, and physically saying to her, "What if, what if we, what if we get this house", which took us a year to buy. "What if we get this house, I win the commission race, we start a family? What if? Is that all possible?" And here we are, living out our dreams, day after day, and making new ambitions and plans and dreams for our future. The first time I was sworn into office, my, you were my fiancee, Jenna. The second time, you were pregnant with our son who's here tonight. And now, after six years, I'm leaving office and you're pregnant with our baby girl. I cherish every day... I cherish every day we spend, spend together and look so forward to each and every adventure with you. You've made me... I'm sorry. You've made me a better man from the day I met you, and what a beautiful life we've built together. Y'all have heard it takes a village to raise a child, and as you can see, I'm a product of that village. I would like to thank all of my parents and grandparents for the sacrifices you've made on my behalf, and ultimately, the well-rounded life you've helped me live and create. I'd like to thank my mother for nurturing me and giving me strength and spirit. You're my calming force, and I can always look to you to truly hear me. It seems like yesterday, we were working late in City Hall, in, in this particular space, working on your project Birds Leaving the Earth, which now hangs in Tampa International Airport in their private collection. I'd like to recognize my father, who taught me at such a young age the value and importance of community, and unknown to me at that time, wove me into the fabric of this community. You first taught me about our community of family and friends, and not long after that, taught me about the community of Tarpon Springs. Growing up, I attended board meetings in City Hall, where my father was chairman of the Charter Review Committee. He chaired the Health Facilities Board that ultimately saved our community hospital and kept it here in Tarpon Springs. I attended library board meetings, where my father served, and I was the youngest donor to the library on Lemon Street, which through the Bat Board's effort, our new community library was constructed. He taught me the importance of taking care of elders in our community and when, and the people who took care of me as a child. And when, when I was old enough to hunt and fish, those older men and women had fresh fish and venison deliveries to their door. When I was a freshman at Jesuit High School in Tampa, whose motto was "Men for Others", I learned that I needed 180 community service hours to graduate. Coming home overwhelmed by that number, I started to tell my dad about the community service projects I intended to do in other communities. And he first expressed his pleasure about the graduation requirement, but followed by saying that if I was to do that much community service, it would be in my own community, and sent me to the hospital to sign up. And it was there I spent many, many four-hour shifts, uh, working at the Tarpon Springs Hospital, and I am grateful for every minute of it. It's these early experiences in my life in Tarpon and the lessons I learned that gave me such a passion for home. Throughout my life, my dad has been such a knowledgeable resource to me, and especially when it comes to Tarpon Springs. All of his early lessons, and even the lessons learned yesterday, have undoubtedly helped me become a better community servant, community leader, and ultimately, gave me an understanding of what it means to govern this, to govern this community at the will of its people. Thank you, Dad. I came home to Tarpon Springs, January 2009, probably the smartest I've ever been in busting at the seams with school theory from Auburn University. Knowing right away I wanted to serve my community, I submitted an application for the Budget Advisory Committee at 23-years-old and still wet behind the ears. To my surprise, the board elected me as chairman at our first meeting, and within seconds, Michelle and Irene had a gavel in front of me, and I, I gave my first roll call. One of my proudest achievements on that board was identifying the city's sale of surplus properties, which do not add anything to our ad valorem tax base in the form of revenue. The recommendation was made to the Board of Commissioners at the time, and they carried out the beginnings, big, beginning stages of those sales. One year later, I joined the commission, and the surplus property sales led to the city's first downtown craft brewery and a longtime vacant old fire station, which is now Silver King Brewery, and has been the catalyst for many redevelopment projects downtown. Also, as a product of the surplus sale, while serving on the Board of Commissioners, we, we made a request for a proposal on the old nursing home property. We negotiated a deal with the most qualified buyer in what the commission believed to be in the best interest of the community, and now the property is a beautiful assisted-living facility, which created 80 well-paying jobs and brought in, brought more industry to our town. As your commissioner, I formally joined the board in 2011, at which time municipalities all over the state and country were struggling with their budgets, cutting services to their citizens, and making drastic budget cuts. This year, this current year, for the first time in six years, we, six years, we reduced our mileage rate. Coming into this board at that time in history and at such a young age, I wouldn't say I had something to prove, but I was definitely energetic and looking to see change in our community. So many had hoped for, and for me, the change I saw only when I closed my eyes. I recall a community that had one of the worst business and development reputations in Pinellas County. So bad that investors would not bring their money here, and our own residents were scared and intimidated dealing with city staff. I recall this community hemorrhaging hundreds of thousands of dollars of public funds and out, on out-of-town consultants to tell us where and when and how to plant trees, add light poles, parking spaces, and benches. In both examples, this is no longer the case. The City of Tarpon Springs is and has been open for business with a smile on our face, and when the challenging projects present themselves, our new attitude is "This is how we can do it" versus "This is why we can't". For the most part, we got rid of the out-of-town consultants, and the result, this community has seen beautification efforts and projects completed all over in town, all over town, and more importantly, in-house by our qualified men and women in Public Works. While serving on this board, we lit spring bayou with decorative pedestrian lights for the public to feel safe and utilize one of our most cherished parks. We have utilized our Tree Bank money for in-house landscape projects all over town. We took back Tarpon Avenue from Florida Department of Transportation, which enables us to put a pedestrian crosswalk where we see fit and host as many street festivals as our residents are willing to support. As your commissioner, I have had a fir-, I have firsthand sat in the city manager's office, in many cases, brought national developers of new projects to our community in an effort to convince them to do business here, and in turn, we have new development all over town. While the city's economic development is important and clearly visible, it is not my only concern or effort. In fact, most important to me is making sure the people of this community are well taken care of. Whether a citizen has hit a roadblock with staff concerning code enforcement, or a citizen needs help navigating City Hall for a building permit, or the city created, or the city's creation of a, of a summer jobs program for our youth, which is really more of an internship and valuable on so many levels, I've only wanted the best for our community. As it relates to city management, the first lesson I learned on the Budget Advisory Committee was the city's organizational chart. Where the, the citizens are at the top, the Board of Commissioners works for the citizens, and the city manager and city clerk work for the Board of Commissioners and staff, and the staff works for them. As your elected official, I feel I've played a strong role in helping the city manager with the management of this community. Working in town almost every day, and usually only being 10 minutes from, from City Hall, has been a huge advantage to me. In my term, as your elected official, we have retooled and rehired major departments such as the Building Development Services, Planning and Zoning Office, and all of which were necessary for the betterment of this community. We saw a need for an economic development manager to run with desired grant programs and other community initiatives that the commission wanted to offer, and the need for the position was identified and created. As a commissioner, I found it very important to have a thorough understanding of how each individual department functions, and equally important, equally important to have a good working relationship with those department heads. My working relationship with the city manager has always been pretty simple, and I hope he looks fondly on the things we have accomplished together, as I do. My deal with Mark has always been to communicate openly, blunt as possible, and to do our best to understand and support one another's position. But in the rare event we do not agree, there is no unknown or behind-your-back dealing. It's simply a matter of going to the rest of the commission for their thoughts. Mark knows if he tells me no to something, the next question out of my mouth is "Why?", "What for?", "How come?", and "What's your better idea?". So, I've truly enjoyed building relationships with our city staff and working with them on many community projects. Our department heads are of the caliber that this community can now be proud of. To the Board of Commissioners, past and present, first and foremost, I say thank you for your service to this community. It is, it is more times than not a thankless job with very little pay, and no doubt, a labor of love. I've enjoyed working alongside each and every one of you for the betterment of our town. Thank you for supporting me in my personal initiatives and in my voting positions over the years. I've been on the losing side of many 4-1 votes, but as always, I voted what I believed best for this community. Commissioner Banther, you, sir, have made me a better commissioner. Getting to know you... Getting to know you, as we worked on my campaign together, then worked on yours, and ultimately, serving this community together for the past four years, has been an experience I'll tell my grandchildren about. Serving with you as a like-minded, young professional with a passion for this town has made our job easy. Looking down the dais and knowing that you get, that you have my back has given me the strength I needed in some cases to make tough decisions for our town. We have no doubt grown a lasting friendship, which started as a mutual love for this community, and now, for you to share that same experience with Commissioner Carr couldn't make me any happier. I used to be asked a lot when first elected, "What's next?", "What are your plans for the future in politics?". And I don't know if people got tired of hearing the same response again and again, or if I just got older and more boring, but for me then, and for me now, my interests are in Tarpon Springs. This is not and was not a mere stepping stone for me. This was about service to my hometown, just like my father and his father and his father before me. All things considered, and having had time to reflect, I've always loved this community, long before I even knew it formally as Tarpon Springs. That is why I chose to move home. I chose to get involved in city government. I chose to start my family here and make long-term investments here, just as my family did before me. That said, it's crucial that this positive momentum we've seen over the past six years continue in the right direction, and this community continue to regain our glory as Venice of the South. I cannot tell you how happy and proud it makes me today to physically see this town prospering the way I envisioned it when I closed my eyes six years ago. This has been the honor of my life, and I'm forever grateful for the opportunity. Thank you. God bless Tarpon.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Terrapini. You want to say a few words?
I think I, I know this is more of a time for commissioners, so I got to have my say at the last commission meeting, too. But I just want to remind you, you know, it started, you know, at Craig Park before you came into office, when we chatted. That led to six years of us working together to do what's best for Tarpon Springs, which is great, and we will be partners for working for Tarpon Springs the rest of our lives together, so, uh, and they're working with you, and we'll keep, we'll keep working towards what's best for Tarpon.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now going to the consent agenda. Item number two is the Minutes, March twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, the regularization. Are there any commission comments on that item? Here and now, are there any, uh, public comments on this item? Here and now, the chair wants to entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terrapini? Mayor LaHuzis?
Yes. Item number three is a Resolution two thousand seventeen dash fourteen, ratification of election results. This year, attorney will read the resolution.
Resolution two thousand seventeen dash fourteen, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, ratifying and confirming the results of the municipal election held on March fourteen, two thousand seventeen, and providing for an effective date hereof. It's Resolution two thousand seventeen dash fourteen by title only.
Thank you. Any commission comments on this item? Here and now, any public comments on this item?
Peterlax five one four Ashland Avenue. Very heartfelt words, and I know where you're coming from. When you look at, look back and see what you have accomplished, you realize it's been a process. And sometimes those processes take a while, but you look back and you say, "Hey, well, we did get some things done, so I appreciate all the efforts you have done, uh, to move us forward and to continue the path that, uh, some people in this audience, uh, started on some of the things with regards to art and trees and budget advisory committees and other things that we've put forward." But I picked this point of the agenda to speak about something else. We had a lovely lady sing our national anthem. And what does it really tell us? Our forefathers fought for us to be able to be here, to have a peaceful progression of government, and allow our citizens to have a voice. That's what this is really about. But what troubles me, and this is what I'm going to point out to you. This is from Irene. You can get a copy of it. Seventeen thousand five hundred and ninety-seven voters. A turnout of three thousand two hundred and twenty. So, only eighteen percent of the people in Tarpon participated. Now, not to disparage anything, the papers, and when they put out the stuff, they say Mr. Carr got forty-six percent, Frank got thirty-two percent, Tim got twenty-two percent, but when you really look at the numbers, and again, it's not disparage Mr. Carr, because he honestly won the election, but he won the election with eight point four percent of the registered voters in Tarpon. Now, what even bothered me more so is we've made efforts to expand people to have access to voting rights. I mean, that's being fought in many states. Approximately seven thousand mail ballots were sent out. We received approximately twenty-seven hundred at a thirty-eight point four percent rate. Sad. All it needs is fifty cents for a stamp. So, when our forefathers fought to keep us free and to be able to vote, and we now send young men out to battles that could figure them for years, so we can continue to do this, and yet, so many people don't participate. And that's sad. So, all I can say is, uh, I urge you to take this moment and share it with family and people, and say that you need to get involved, whatever your cause is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Here and now, the chair wants to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terrapini?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzis?
Yes. Well, that concludes the corner board agenda, and we go into the public comments on the items that were not being discussed tonight.
Peterlax five one four Ashland Avenue, uh, I won't make this too long. I want to thank the board, uh, at the last meeting for approving a resolution disavowing HB seventeen. Uh, maybe during board staff comments, we can hear if that has been forwarded to other cities, other cities in the county, if we've gotten the mayor and, uh, what's the board, the mayor and manager board, uh, have they looked at it and what we'll be doing? And I've spoken about this before. I just heard on the radio today that the, uh, the head senator for the Natural Resources Committee said that they were not going to go forward, uh, with their anti-fracking bill. And the reason why is the House is not putting out any similar legislation, so it's dead for this year at this point. Uh, I want to thank Catherine Williams and thank that there is still some press that covers us for bringing out the fact about water, and I've brought this before. Now that there is no bill before the House or the Senate doing anything about fracking, and there is no restriction yet about you making your own rules, you need to start looking at setting a geographic zone that you have a fracking-free zone in. I mean, I've said this before, we've invested forty-plus million dollars into a reverse osmosis water plant to keep our water safe. Now, if they put fracking places in Hernando or upriver in Pasco, that's not going to affect us if we do it locally, but the more important thing is to get our legislators back on track about this. And in the meantime, if we need to, you need to take your own action while you still have home rule, because as we've said before, you can live with water and air. Food, you can go a little longer without, but those two things, essential. Thank you.
Thank you, Delax. Any other comments? Here and now, we're now going to the staff comments. Police chief?
I'd just like to, um, Vice Mayor Terrap, uh, Terrapini, it's been an honor serving with you, and hopefully in the future, we can serve together, do a great job, and, um, thanks for all your service.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you. C. Attorney?
I, I would echo the chief's comments. Vice Mayor, it's been a pleasure to serve with you. Truly professional, the very definition of a public servant, and always able to disagree without being disagreeable. Uh, thank you very much. It's been my pleasure.
Thank you. City manager? No. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you. Vice Mayor Terrapini, um, I also can't believe that it's been six years. It seems like yesterday that I swore you in. Um, your passion and love for the city proves because you've served the city well. Just for some election history that Vice Mayor Terrapini forgot to mention, um, he's actually our second youngest seated commissioner at the time of office. And when we, the clerk's office did research, we found that his dad was actually the youngest commissioner he served, by days, by days, and that was because the elections were held in November at that time. It's been an honor and a pleasure to work with you and work for you and with you, and, uh, I wish you the best, and you're always welcome to the clerk's office anytime.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We are now going to the board comments. Vice Mayor Terrapini?
I've said it all. I don't have anything more. Thank you all for being here.
Commissioner Seber?
Well, I've pretty much said it all, too, but, uh, thank you for your service, of course, and, uh, thank you for teaching me a few things.
Commissioner Panther?
I agree. Uh, I, I, I can't say much more, but, uh, uh, it was, I think you gave a very modest speech there. And, uh, again, like, like, like I said, I think your contributions here will be realized years from now, so thank you.
Commissioner Kik?
Uh, thank you. I think everything's been said tonight, um, but you will truly be missed, Townsend. You became a good friend through the years. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, Vice Mayor Terrapini, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Well, the meeting is adjourned and signed dine at seven eleven. We're going to take a short break. We'll be right back.
We're changing seats.
Testing, test, testing, testing.
Daddy, daddy.
I, Leon's in the marines.
Hey daddy.
I said he's, I said he's approved.
Look at Green Daddy.
Daddy.
Yes, sir.
What are you doing daddy? Daddy, what are you doing?
No, it's not. There you go, there you go. I love it.
Where's some candy?
Here, I'll give you a piece if you're a nice boy. Let's sit back and take one picture.
Why daddy? No, these.
Look at, look at Nana.
Okay. Okay, okay daddy.
Look at Jacob, look at Jacob, look at Jacob.
Okay, okay daddy.
All right.
Hey daddy, I want to talk in your seat, just like.
Just like me.
I'm proud of you daddy.
Oh, thanks.
Well, I want to say I'm proud of you. What are you doing daddy? Hey Nana, I want to say I'm proud of you. Hey Nana, why are you doing that?
Hold on, I'm gonna give you a piece of candy. I got a piece right here. I got a piece, I got a piece of candy. Don't you want a piece of candy? Okay, come on, let's take a picture.
Take a picture real quick. How you doing, sir? Did a good job. I just came back from this, I'm going back and finish up. You can't be, you're, I got some money in my hand.
Oh, he's got money. He got money. You know, money. Oh, wait.
I just got, I don't have any. I'd rather just do it. Go ahead and send me getting the data.
Five or 10 minutes at a time.
I don't know. I don't know, I mean, I, you know, I don't know anybody. I know one of the scout masters that was there when I was there, but I don't know them besides that, so that's odd. It has to be, because they would show up. I'm always hot. Just assume I'm hot. That's just assumed.
If everyone could please take their seat so we can get started. If everyone could please take their seat so we can get started, please. If I could have Commissioner Seber come forward with her family?
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. Do you solemnly swear affirm? That I will support, protect and uphold the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Florida and the Charter and Laws of the City of Tarpon Springs that I am now duly qualified to hold the office of Commissioner Seat Two that I will faithfully perform the duties of that office on which I am now about to enter.
Now, if I can have Commissioner Lex Carr come up with his family, please. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye. Jacob Carr.
Do you solemnly swear affirm?
Do you solemnly swear and affirm?
That I will support
That I will support.
protect and uphold
Protect and uphold.
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and of the State of Florida
and of the State of Florida
and the Charter and Laws
and the Charter of Law
and the City of Tarpon Springs
of the City of Tarpon Springs
that I am duly qualified
that I am duly qualified
to hold the office
to hold the office
of Commissioner Seat One
of Commissioner Seat One
that I will faithfully perform
that I will faithfully perform
the duties of that office
the duties of that office
on which I am now
on which I am now
about to enter
about to enter. Thank you. Mom. Got it? Yeah, got it, yeah.
I did video too.
Congratulations.
I'm calling to order the regular station meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, April the 4th, 2017, and the time is 7:25. Roll call, please.
Mayor Lewisis?
Here.
Commissioner Banther?
Here.
Commissioner Seber?
Here.
Commissioner Kikta?
Here.
Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Thank you. The invocation will be given by Reverend Jaclohn. If you please stand and remain standing.
Heavenly Father, we rejoice in your calling out of people to serve you. We ask your blessing upon Commissioners Seber and Carr as they begin anew. May they be filled with your wisdom and strength and cooperation. May this board know your guidance and your aid in the great responsibilities you've given them. May your goodness and grace be poured out upon this great city of Tarpon Springs, its residents and all those who serve. We pray in your precious name. Amen.
You okay? Thank you. Please proceed. We are starting with presentations to the newly elected Commissioners. Commissioner Seber already has all her items, so we're going to go directly to the Commissioner Carr. Commissioner Carr? I'd like to present you with the key of the city, name badge, the city pin, and a tie pack. Your name tag?
Okay.
Your tie? For you.
Okay.
I don't know what you're going to use.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you though. Congratulations. Commissioner Seber, you already have yours, so.
Yes.
We are now going to the Commission Comments. If any, we start with Commissioner Carr.
Sure. Just have a few comments that I'd like to say. Thank you all for being here tonight, and it's important. This is a great town we live in. I would like to thank the Lord for the ability and opportunity to serve in this great town of Tarpon Springs. Before the election started, I needed to obtain one vote, and it was a very important vote to me. And that was from my wife, which I received. Thank you so much, Carrie, for your support and encouragement during this election. I couldn't have done it without you. I would also like to thank all of my family and friends for your support, for I couldn't have been elected without you all. Thank you to the residents of Tarpon Springs for believing in me and trusting that I was the right choice for the future of Tarpon Springs. I look forward to serving this great town we all call home and seeing it continue to grow and to improve. Thank you all.
Thank you. Commissioner Seber?
Well, Jacob, welcome. I was sitting exactly in your seat three years ago, and I'm happy that you're here next to me. So I wish you lots of success with us up here and welcome again.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Panther?
Yes, thank you. Jacob, this has been a long time coming for you, I think. I remember getting to serve with you on the Heritage Preservation Board about six years ago. And I knew that the City Commission was definitely in your future at that time. And though I think you bring a very unique set of skill sets to the table. Only this being your hometown and having that base of knowledge helps out a lot. But also your knowledge of business, of the environment, and your volunteer list of youth activities. I think that's going to help bring out some strong initiatives, you know, here on the board. And I look forward to serving with you in that capacity, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kikta?
Thank you. Commissioner, congratulations. Very happy for you, very excited. You had a plan and you stuck to it, and this is why he's sitting up here today. Jacob ran a very good campaign, and I feel that you bring a lot to this board and a lot to our community. And just remember, only one word of advice is, when you're sitting up here, and you know, we make some tough decisions, do what you think is right for your community and stay true to your word. And I think you'll do a great job up here, and we have a lot of work to get done over the next few years, so I look forward to serving with you.
Thank you. It is a privilege for me to be here tonight to welcome the newly elected Commissioners. But first, let me congratulate the candidates who ran for office, and I want to thank them for their desire and the dedication for the public service. Commissioner Carr, it's a pleasure to welcome you to the Board of Commissioners, and I'd like to congratulate you and looking forward to work with you, to serve you with you, the people of Tarpon Springs. I'd also like to recognize and congratulate Commissioner Seber for a second term. Congratulations, and I'm looking forward to continue working with you to serve better the people of Tarpon Springs. Thank you. Welcome.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't get to congratulate Commissioner Seber. Can I say a few words?
Of course you can.
Thank you. I just want to congratulate you, Rea, on your win. Rea ran unopposed, so she had the easiest job of anybody. And, but I believe you were able to do that is because the citizens in this community had the trust and the faith in you to lead our city again. And so I think that, I believe that is why you did run unopposed. And I want to thank you for your service, and I look forward to working with you the next few years.
Thank you, Susan.
Commissioner Panther?
Yes, Commissioner Seber, it's been a pleasure getting to know you here on the board and growing that friendship with you. I think you bring a lot to the table when it comes to issues of tourism and business, and you're always promoting Tarpon Springs in some form or fashion, keeping us up to date on the current events and festivals in Tarpon Springs. I'm not sure how you have the energy that you do, but I'm looking forward to serving another three years with you. And the fact that you won unopposed shows that from day one, you have the right things in mind and that you govern well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr, you want to say a few more words?
Yeah, it was nice running during the same time as you. I think you ran a better campaign overall. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Looking forward to serving with you.
And you?
I'm happy to have run unopposed.
Thank you.
And I appreciate being up here for another three years, because I do feel that we have a lot more to accomplish, and I'm looking forward to accomplishing some things that I'm interested in, working with you guys to get done, and of course, serving the citizens of our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. We are now going to the Public Comments. If anyone wants to say a few words?
I figured I might as well. I don't want you all to think that I'm going to be racing Peter Delakis down here every night or anything, but. No, I wanted to congratulate you, Commissioner Seber, and thank you for your kind words to me. It has been a pleasure to serve you. You're absolutely right. We have grown our friendship. And we've grown our friendship through the service to this community, which is always something that I feel like creates a strong bond between people. Commissioner Carr, it feels good to say that. It's definitely been a long time coming for you. You were instrumental in my campaign when I first got elected, and that's something that I'll never forget. I'll also never forget growing up together down the street. You lived on Banana, I lived on South Spring. We played together for years. I played with your sisters. You know, watched plenty of movies on your living room. So thank you to your parents as well for always hosting me and, you know, letting me snack on y'all's food. But more importantly, you know, we share the same passion for this town. So I'm happy to see you up there. I'm honored that you have essentially taken my spot on the board. I know you'll do good things for this town. You're certainly qualified. You've served on plenty of boards, and you have the passion for the town. So congratulations to you. You ran a fantastic campaign. You stuck to the game plan. You ran like you were losing, even though you weren't. And, you know, you're a better man for it. So cheers to you, and I look forward to working with you all in the future. Thank you.
Commissioner Carr, I want to congratulate you. You ran a very good, hard campaign. You never gave up. And every day you were out there running. We saw you working hard. And even though we got tired of the signs, we knew you were going to win. But just remember, your dog is now first dog of Tarpon Springs. And the picture was nice of your dog.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Here none? We are now going to the item number two, which is a resolution 2017-15, election for the Vice Mayor. My fellow Commissioners, normally this position is filled with the most senior member, and I would like to recommend Commissioner Panther to be the next Vice Mayor. We need to have a motion on the floor, then the C D Attorney will read the resolution.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. We have first and second. C D Attorney will read the resolution.
Resolution 2017-15, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, appointing Commissioner David Banther Vice Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs and providing for an effective date hereof. It's Resolution 2017-15 by Title Only.
Thank you. We are now going to the Commission Comments.
I mean, I gladly accept. Thank you. You know, I hope to be able to serve well in that capacity, and I have some big shoes to fill in that capacity as well, and help to support you even more, Mayor, in how the board operates, and also serve in your absence.
Thank you. Commissioner Kikta?
I just want to congratulate you, and you do have some big shoes to fill, so we'll be expecting a lot from you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carr?
Looking forward to serving with you over the next couple of years, and I know you're going to do a great job.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes, congratulations. I have gotten to know you a little better and appreciate our friendship, and I know that you are going to do a great job. And you always have great enthusiasm and ideas and the love for our city, so congratulations.
Congratulations, Vice Mayor. Vice Commissioner Panther? Thank you. We are now going to Public Comments. Public Comments, please.
All right, Vice Mayor Banther. Congratulations. Very proud of you. My only disappointment is your little girls weren't here to see their daddy get this award, this honor. But I understand, understand. The Greek community is very saddened tonight because Father Konstantinos Raptus has passed away, and he was dean of the cathedral for many, many years here in Tarpon Springs. Married a lot of young people here in town in the church, christened a lot of our children. And he was highly respected in our Greek community. And the bishop saw fit to move him out to Las Vegas, and that's where he was his remaining years. But he is coming back home to be buried. But he loved Tarpon Springs, and. and he was very true to Tarpon through the years, even when he wasn't here, and he kept up with all the City Commission meetings.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzis?
Yes. We are now going to the item number three, which is the appointment to the School Transportation and Safety Committee. This is for replacement of former Vice Mayor Terapeni. This committee meets twice a year, and the next meet is September sixth. I'm looking for a volunteer.
I will volunteer for this.
Thank you. Do we have any other volunteer? We all agree, right?
I've sat on the board previously when I first was Commissioner. It's a great, it's a great opportunity to, you know, voice your opinion.
Well, thank you. Any other Commission comments? No. Any public comments on this item? Here, none. The Chair will entertain the motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzis?
Yes. Well, that concludes the agenda tonight, and we go to the public comments of the items that will not be discussed tonight. Anyone has any comments, please come forward. Peter Delakis is not here. We go to the staff comments. Police Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Seber on your reelection, and congratulations, Commissioner Carr, on your election. Look forward to serving with you and to have moved all the way down there that used to sit over here, but Commissioner or Vice Mayor Banther, congratulations on your appointment. Look forward to serving with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
Congratulations to Commissioner Seber and Commissioner Carr. The City Attorney's Office is here to serve you, so please let us do that in whatever capacity you feel appropriate and necessary, and we look forward to working with you, as always.
Mr. Licouris?
I want to congratulate Commissioner Carr and Commissioner Seber also, and warn them that we've been a month without a meeting, and I know I have the Vice Mayor now next to me who keeps me timely with meetings, but we've got a lot of items to go over the next two meetings, so the next meeting is going to be a little heavier. So we have a couple of heavy meetings, because obviously we missed the meeting, so we'll get you started right away, because we've got a pretty full agenda coming up the next two. So just want to warn you in advance, I may go over your, the time.
I'll have dinner first, it's okay.
Okay.
Madam City Clerk?
I also would like to congratulate Commissioner Seber and Commissioner Carr. I look forward to continue to work with you and working with you, Commissioner Carr, and I know you both do a great job.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobs, I want to thank you and your staff for the exceptional job that you did today, preparing all that. Michelle, thank you, too. We're now going to the board comments. Vice Mayor Terapen, Panther.
It's okay, you can call me that, too.
See, habits, all habits.
I have no further. I have no further comments, but just, you know, I'm grateful to serve on this board, and I know we'll, I think we have two years together, right, as this board? And that's going to be, I think we'll accomplish some very good things for the town, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kikta?
You know, I just echo his comments. We do have two years together with this board, and I think we have a lot to accomplish, but I know we're going to, we're going to get it done. And, but I'm looking forward to it, and congratulations again to both of you.
Commissioner Seber?
I have no more comments, thank you.
Looking forward to serving the next couple of years, and thank you all for your support.
Former Vice Mayor Terapen, you want to comment? Thank you. I have some announcements to make. Thursday, April sixth, we have the Sunset Concert. It starts at seven P M. to eight P M. This is free to the public. Friday, April the seventh, we have the first Friday event on Tarpon Avenue from six P M. to ten P M. April eighth and April nine, we have the Fine Arts Festival at Craig Park that begins at nine A M. The Recreation Department on April eighth are going to have the Easter egg hunt at the Sports Complex on Jesmond Avenue from ten A M. to one P M. Also like to express my condolences to the family of Mr. Parker, who just passed away. Mr. Parker was always remembered for his dedication to diving and to the sponge industry, and we are very thankful for his contributions. He wrote an amazing book, The Twenty Thousand Divers Under the Sea, which promotes the sponge industry. May his memory be eternal. And we just learned that Father Raptus, who was our priest here in Tarpon Springs for many years, he passed away. Our condolences to his families, and if I'm correct, I think we're going to have the memorial service next Monday?
I believe Tuesday.
Tuesday?
At the cemetery.
Is that going to be at the church?
Just to the cemetery. They're having services.
Thank you. And Mr. Licouris, I want to thank you for interrupting your vacation, coming from Orlando to be part of the ceremony. Thank you for doing that.
I wouldn't miss it, man.
Thank you. Well, that concludes the regular session, and it's adjourned at seven forty-five. Good night, everyone, and thank you for coming.
Yes, we do.
The vice and vice.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Ray, have a great night.
Tarpon vice.
That's a good thing, isn't it?
Vice Mayor Banther. Tarpon vice.
There you go, there you go.
It's going to be your new title.
No, I'm not going to be able to.